Okay, we're gonna start the meeting. This is a public hearing on what we normally would have would call the school ballot. There are some other things on this, so it's it's more than just a school ballot. So we'll go through all the warrant articles one by one. Jennifer, can you gonna read those or?
Yeah.
Okay. So the meeting has been called to order, a public hearing. So go right ahead, Jen.
All right, so this is the town of Acton, Maine, special town warrant to Robert Anderson, a constable in the town of Acton. In the name of the state of Maine, you were hereby requested to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town of Acton qualified to vote in town affairs to assemble at the Acton Town Hall on April twenty seventh, twenty twenty one, at eight AM in the morning to act in the following articles. Article one is choosing a moderator, so you have to be at the town hall at eight o'clock if you want to choose a moderator to oversee the polls for the day. And that is by written secret ballot. So there's certainly no discussion for that article unless you're here that day and you want to participate in the vote. Article two, submitted by voter petition. Are you in favor of establishing a town ordinance that reads, no person shall spread, discharge, or permit the discharge of straight road salt, sodium chloride, salt brine, calcium chloride, or magnesium chloride on any road within the Shoreland District, Resource Protection District, or within three hundred feet of water wells. Sand-salt mix used in the aforementioned areas shall not exceed twenty percent. Board of Selectmen recommend a no vote, three to zero. Warrant and finance recommends a no vote, five to one.
Okay, that's the that's the voter petition article, which is Article two on the road salt. So do we have anyone that wishes to speak on this? Leaving it up to the two moderators of the site, of the Zoom meeting, to look for folks that want to speak on this.
Yeah. Mary Stanton, I'm an unmute her.
Okay, go ahead, Mary.
She's gonna unmute first, Mary.
Oh.
There you go.
So how many roads are we talking about?
If I made Mr. Walsh, Mr. Donahue was present, can I unmute him and maybe?
Yep, I mean, from what it says, town ordinance, it looks like it's all the town roads.
All town roads.
Yep.
All town roads, so we'll be slipping and sliding in the winter on ice, is that what I'm thinking?
Well, either you're you're gonna be slipping and sliding, or you're gonna have a pile of dirt on them, one or the other.
Yes.
Okay, because if anyone has gone down like Fox's Ridge heading towards Lebanon, and I think they put a lot of dirt instead of salt, you can't even drive on it. It's very bad. You could tell we're acting ends and we're Lebanon begins.
Okay.
Ed, Kim wants to answer Mary as well, and Jeff.
Good, Kim, go right ahead.
All right, in this, I was thinking the same thing, all roads, but as I'm reading this, it says on any road within Shoreland District, Resource Protec- Protection District, or within three hundred feet of water wells.
So it's not necessarily.
So it wouldn't be every road, does that? Does that make sense, and can we let Jeff talk, I guess?
Dave, you wanna?
Yeah, well, if you read it, what it does is it gives a broad, you know, resource protection. Most roads in the town of Acton have some sort of resource protection on part of them. Plus, then when you start talking to three hundred feet from wells, as far as I know, if you go in your backyard, highly doubtful your well is more than three hundred feet from the the road. So what you're gonna end up doing, only takes that one road to have a well closer than three hundred feet, and you can't put salt now in either. So the way I look at this, this is every road in town.
I would have to agree, the within the Shoreland District is easy to look at a map and see Shoreland. Resource Protection is easy to look at a map and see, or within three hundred feet of a well. I live on Sam Page Road. Part of my property is in Resource Protection, but I don't believe the road is, but all of our wells are within three hundred feet of the of the road.
Mr. Donahue has his hand up.
Go ahead, Mr. Donahue.
Hi, so like you said, it's probably gonna be every road because of the well situation.
Let me let me interrupt you for one second, if you don't mind. I just want to introduce Mr. Donahue, Mr. Jeff Donahue. He is also the petitioner that has submitted this. So just so everyone knows. So when he's answering the questions, he's answering it as the person who submitted it. Go ahead, Jeff, thank you.
Thank you, Ed. So like you said, it is probably gonna go to every road because unless you get a waiver from somebody that they're not gonna sue the town if their well becomes contaminated with salt. Okay, so every road. And and like the woman said earlier, that the roads, the roads are are tough already. You know what I'm saying? So I don't see that that's gonna make much difference in in some of these roads. There's problem roads, there's some part of Hopper Road, there's parts of Fox's Ridge Road, that no matter what you do, they're gonna, they're a problem situation. Now, putting putting salt down, back to the roads is now, this only pertains to for the town, for you, Ed, and for for the road commissioners and and the rest of the selectmen, is is you're maintaining thirty-one roads out of a hundred and sixty something roads in town, that's less than twenty percent of the roads. Now, I don't hear anybody else coming up here and and any other, there's there's a hundred and twenty-eight other roads in town or more that other people are 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 maintaining, and I don't hear them come forward. I haven't heard nothing, it's been a year. It's been over a year since this has been out there, and I haven't heard one person tell me that that they don't want to do it, that's outside of your view people at the town. The other thing is, is the, it seems that that the this is, it's a do or die situation we're in now. Because all the talk I've heard from the town hall is that that the DOT wants us to go to straight salt, no sand whatsoever. So this, if this fails, it's basically giving you all permission to just go straight salt, because everybody's all over straight salt. I've talked to the road commissioners, the one that comes up from Massachusetts DOT is all over the straight salt. And and I don't think that's the answer, I don't think that's a right direction the town needs to go in. I haven't heard one person say either that salt is safe for the environment, for the water, for the plants, for the roadsides, for anything. I haven't heard anybody say it's this, it's safe, it's a safe, it's a safe thing to do for the environment.
Well, I'll answer that.
Thank you, Jeff.
Nobody, nobody thinks salt is safe for the environment. Now, the problem is with your article is if you deleted salt completely out of the equation, I can understand what you're talking about, but we can't do that, because that's almost impossible to do. But the problem you have here is, is you're not accomplishing anything, you're making it worse. Because what happens is, is the Department of Environmental Protection says that the sand runoff and from the salt is from sand in the roads and everything else is worse off than the salt is. Okay, it plugs up the ditch lines, gets into the water, doesn't dilute away like salt does. And so, but the problem you have here is with your, your article is you're saying it's fine to use a certain beside twenty percent salt mix, which is fine. But what you're end up gonna end up doing is using the same amount of salt as if you went out and put out like you normally would, straight salt. And nobody's, very rarely in town acting, anybody's using straight salt, it's very rare, okay? But to use a twenty percent load, you still have to have the amount of salt to get the job done. So that means you just put extra loads out, well, what do you do? You're putting a bunch more sand out. So what you're doing is you're actually going the wrong way, you're not helping anybody, you're gonna make it worse. Because you're just gonna be dumping sand everywhere. To accomplish what one load of salt will do, you'll have to run four or five loads of salt sand. That's the problem here, and and I've I've done all the courses with through Maine DOT. I used to be a big sand guy, it's, I've been doing this for twenty-five years. And when I first started in the town of Acton, we ran sand salt, and we ran like a fifteen percent max. And we didn't run salt highly at all, because we didn't have any. And what what ended up happening, at the end of the day, we pounded out ten, twelve loads of sand in a storm. And then we started gradually going towards a more salt priority. And and don't get me wrong, you can overspread salt, and it happens, okay? And there's ways to correct this, and this isn't it. But at the end of the day, as we go, as time went on and on and on, we found out that we could cover more area, use the same amount of salt as as if we would if it was in a si- a a fifteen percent max, and cover more area, less time, and be more effective, especially during certain storms. You take an ice storm, you don't go put a twenty percent mix of sand salt down, it freezes on the sand. It's counterproductive, and I would never have believed it. Over the years and years and years I was doing this, I got brought up doing it the old school way. And as we evolved on, and I went to the classes and stuff, and I became a believer. Now, I I I salt for the city of Sanford, I don't put a stitch of sand in my truck, but we only go out, I only put out one load compared to three that I normally would, if I was running sand. You're gonna still get the same amount of salt, one way or another, it just depends how much sand you want to dump out there.
Have another hand up right now?
Yes, Mark.
Yeah, Mark C., if you wish to speak on my on mute and.
Sorry about that, oh, yeah, Mark, Mark Karen, and we live on a Red Gate Lane off H Road. I got two questions, one, what was the driving factor of this ordinance, proposed ordinance? Was there, you know, reports of problems with wells that that the salt had been you being used was perpetuating in penetrating the ground into wells? And then the follow-up question is, I look at risk aversion. By removing the salt, do we create more risk for life safety issues of drivers in the winter? I'm just trying to get an understanding on this, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Donahue, do you wish to respond to that?
He's gotta unmute himself.
You're muted.
So this started on my road, I'm in South Acton, and and they were using calcium chloride for a dust preventive measure down here, right up to the water. And so I started researching what the calcium chloride does to the water and the land and the wells and and other other microorganisms that live in the, and I got the same reaction from from the road association here that we get from Dave is that the dust from the road is causing more issues than the calcium to control the dust. Okay, but Dave said, what Dave said ain't exactly true either, is the salt and the and the sodium and the chloride separate. Okay, and this this the sodium, same thing with calcium, the calcium mixes with the water and typically washes away. The chlorides are forever, it's one of them forever chemicals. Okay, it either mixes with the dirt, or it settles to the bottom of the lake, and it affects what lives in the bottom of the lake. And what lives in the bottom of the lake is the the little microorganisms that eat the algae. Now, it's a, it's, and it's a double-edged sword. You have to pick and choose what you want, do you want a nice lawn? Do you want to kill what's eating the algae, you're gonna end up with algae in the water. And and people have come forward in two thousand sixteen, and there's cove out here, and and residents said that there was blooms of algae out in the in the cove out here. They came to the town in two thousand sixteen, looking for money to maintain the road better, to reduce the amount of dust and stuff that's causing the algae blooms in the in the lake. And so I studied up, and I found that that the salt is worse than the calcium. And I brought it to the town, I brought it to the town, there's an ordinance, it's an even stricter ordinance, it says that you can't spread this stuff if it's harmful to plant and aquatic life. I've got the ordinance right here, and they said, they they told me two years ago, four, three out of the four people are in this in this meeting here today, they said that calcium chloride isn't harmful to the to the water. And I got pushed away. So I had no other choice, if I'm gonna battle this, was to petition to the people to reduce the amount of salt that's used in the town, no calcium, no salt, and it's a twenty percent mix. What do they give you, what do they give you with the, when you go to the town to to get sand in the in the in your buckets? You're lucky if you get a ten percent. If it's good enough for your driveway, it's good enough for the roads, I think that they can maintain it. And if they can't, Dave, then then people ought to move on and find people that can do it. And that's that's where I'm at.
There we go, that's an intelligent one right there.
Okay, let's not.
Straight salt, because, Dave, I'm talking, okay? Don't interrupt me again, you're in my house now, friend.
No, no, you're still in my house.
Bye.
Okay, there was a second, there was a second part of Max, I assume, Dave, do you wanna?
Well, I mean, he's absolutely wrong, he doesn't know what the sand salt mixture is down that shed. I can tell you what, never does a road commissioner ever leave that salt shed with a ten, fifteen percent mix. There's a reason why there's a salt pile on the right-hand side. They they, when they put the sand pile up, they put it at a fifteen percent mix, just so it doesn't freeze while it's in the pile. They end up mixing salt into those those loads, and 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 both our road commissioners will tell you this. And my my probably sixteen years of plowing for this town of Acton, I can I can assure you that the mixture that's in that pile is fifteen percent, but gets usually ends up being about a fifty percent mix, by the time it ends up out the door. So, you know, it's ludicrous to think that you can put an article like this forward and say, deal with it, if you can't deal with it, we'll find somebody who can. That's not a very good way to be looking at our town roads. We're, you know, there's other ways of controlling the amount of salt we put on our roads. It's not handcuffing us to something that we can't even enforce. Yeah, how about back in the day when I was road commissioner, and we had a road committee that was all about putting computers in trucks and, you know, all that stuff there, okay? None of that's come up. But I I believe that Mr. Donahue hasn't come out with a full reason on why he did this. He did, he he kinda did. This is because they put calcium on his dirt road. But he, nobody explained that the the Tattle Street Road Association went to the Department of Environmental Protection and asked them whether or not this was correct, this is what we should be doing. And they told them yes. This is coming from the Department of Environmental Protection, okay? They're smarter than we are. And, you know, at the end of the day, what's gonna happen here is this gets voted in, okay, we're not gonna, we're not gonna save anything, we're gonna make it worse. Okay, because we're gonna compensate for what we're not allowed to do, okay? You can't enforce it, you'll have people running around Acton trying to figure out how much salt in each load of truck, each truck, not cool. That ain't gonna work. Best thing to do is have our road commissioners, which I know they'll do, which I believe they've already planned on doing, is go take some classes and see what the amount of salt we should be putting down. You know, how many pounds per mile, lane mile, this and that, but this is not what we want to do. This is, this is absolutely ludicrous to think that you by taking away somebody's ability to take care of a road and just sell, find somebody else who'll do it, because you won't. Okay, we don't, all I know is Acton's always had good roads. I'll pat myself on the back, when I drove up Blueberry Hill and I hit the Lebanon line, you knew our roads were different, and we don't want ours looking like that. And we don't want to look like the ones north of us either, because they're not allowed to use any salt either, okay? There's a reason why our roads are the way they are, it's just education more than anything, and maybe a little lack of, and and not, don't take this the wrong way, but go take the classes, they'll understand, that's how you solve the problem, not by this.
There is definitely a science to it. Mr. Mark, you have your hand still up, are you, okay, go right ahead.
Yeah, I, my my other question was, by removing the salt from from the mix, are the roads safer, or are they more hazardous? It's not, I've been living here since two thousand four and off H Road, which can be kind of tricky, as you know. I've never had an issue with with the roads, I've always thought we've had good roads. I'm just curious, you know, do we increase life safety risk by removing the salt from the mix? Is 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 my question, I I have not researched this, and candidly, I just saw this meeting pop up on on Facebook, and I said, well, jeez, I've not attended one of these, so I wanted to listen in, I had no intention of engaging in this, but it's an interesting, it's an interesting conversation.
Yeah, well, we appreciate you joining in on the on the conversation, so. Who is out there that wants to answer that question?
So Mr. Donahue, Mr. Donahue has, sorry, David, Mr. Donahue has his hand up, as does Ken Winn.
Oh, yeah, I see that.
Yep, I want to get, I'd like to get this, half of this question answered. So if Mr. Donahue can answer it, or someone else? Dave?
Well, the reason, no, I I I guess the the question was, if you're removing the salt, are you talking completely removing the salt, or staying at the twenty percent? Before I answer it, I'm talking, the fellow just just.
Gentlemen that just spoke?
Yeah. Is he right there?
Yeah, I am, it's Mark Karen, by the way.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I mean, if even if you want it twenty percent, you know, if you have to reduce him below that, does it, does, it's gonna be less effective than maybe a mix that's more than that today? But do we know, are there any studies out there that we've seen by reducing a number of it, percentage of it? Does it increase, you know, more accidents, more slide-offs, more risk to drivers? I'm just kind of getting an understanding, trying to get an understanding for risk here.
True.
Well, first of all, you gotta have the, you know, at least a fifteen percent mix in the sand, so it'll freeze. That's that's a big problem, that's why you have to have, so when it's in the back of the truck and it's freezing, you can't apply it. So, yeah, you're gonna, I believe that a sand road that is covered in sand, that's packed down, because you can't melt it off correctly, is more dangerous than a road that's bare. And, I mean, that's just a no-brainer.
Okay. Mr. Donahue? Unmute.
Sorry, I'm I'm new to this kind of platform. But, you know, it it comes down to the choice of of, you know, the lake, how long can the lake sustain the the abuse? And again, this, you you guys only control twenty percent. We don't know what people are putting down on these side roads or the back roads or the the roads around the lakes, we we don't know. We can only assume that they are doing the right thing. People are dumping thousands of pounds of calcium chloride right next to the water on my road, that's that's why I know that. You know, I don't know what's happening in the rest of these lakes, and and nobody does. You know, I just, again, I I got interested in it by the studies that I looked up, and I said, hey, wait a minute. You know, this is, we we have more water in this town than all of York County, freshwater. You know, how long can it sustain itself before there's a problem? And then if the algae blooms happen, then that's gonna happen. So we have to make a choice between, you know, slowing down in the wintertime on the crappy road conditions, or, you know, losing property value when everybody's taxes go up. When's that gonna happen? Probably not my lifetime, but my grandson, you know, he, this is his when I'm done. He's gonna be here, what's what's who's to say? What's the lake gonna be like then, in fifty years from now, when he's old and fighting for the lake here? What can we do to clean up the lake, and how can we get all this this invasive species that's moving in now? Because they like the the more salinity in the water. There hasn't, you know, these are pretty clean lakes, these are all all spring-fed lakes, and they run into each other, and they run down, they go all the way to the ocean from where I'm at. And, you know, a lot of things happen between here and the ocean, and from where they start in the in the springs and the and the streams and everything else. And if we keep pouring this into it, I just don't see it. You know, what else can we do? What else, you know, nobody's come up with a better plan. The better plan is to, you know, more salt, but we're gonna regulate it, we're gonna put, we're gonna put machines in the trucks so we can tell how much salt we're using. But we don't really know, we only know how much salt we're using, we don't know what it's doing to the environment. But what it's doing to the wells, ask the people up north in Belfast, whose well was polluted by the salt. They have a statute, it happens so much that the town's responsible by statute, that if a road, if a well gets contaminated, this town is responsible, if the town is maintaining that road. That doesn't extend to the to the people, to the road association people, the Tattle Street Road Association, Thirteenth Street, all these other roads. That doesn't extend to them, is it, this only extends to a municipality. So if something happens to my well, which is six hundred feet from the road, I'm on my own. You know, who do I go to if my well is contaminated? Same with with Mark, he's on off of, you know, he's on a private road as well. They don't know what they're putting on that road, if his well's contaminated by salt contamination, then he's on his own as well. You can try, but I just haven't seen any alternatives.
Okay, thank you.
And you've got two people, sorry not to interrupt, yeah, Mr. Winn, we see, Ken Winn and Mary Stanton is second.
Okay, let's go with, I don't know who was on the longest, let's go with Ken Winn.
Yep. Well, I wanna, excuse me. About two years ago, we had a workshop with the DEP up at the Acton Town Hall. There's about thirty people there from different roads. And it was regarding the maintenance of the dirt roads. And we traveled a couple of different roads. And talking with the DEP, one of the things for solving the dust problem is using calcium chloride. The reason for it is it keeps the, it keeps the dirt road moist in the summer. Which, because the problem we were having down here is, before the calcium chloride was put down, the dust, when all the traffic is in the summer, it was rising up and it was a big cloud, it was going in the cold. And that's what was causing the green and giving us the allergy. Since then, it's disappeared. So we use the calcium chloride to keep the moisture so it holds the road together. And also, when people walk on the road in the summer, I mean, that dust is brutal, you you can't even walk on the road when the traffic's that bad. So the calcium chloride has helped us to keep maintaining the road. Now, in terms of how much we put down, we put fifty percent less than what the DEP recommends, we know that for a fact. So it's a lot less. And and again, you know, the salt, you gotta have it in the winter to melt the ice, because you get the shaded areas on the road from the trees, and it's all icing up, so you have to have it there. But our primary thing we did it was to put the calcium chloride far, to keep the road together and keep the dust down, because it was it was turning the cove green. Now, in terms of the contamination, hearing about wells and stuff, the fears of calcium chloride. Calcium chloride isn't food products, canned goods. It's a salt, it's in there, I have it right here, things, it shows you, I have diced tomatoes from Hannaford's. When you look at the ingredients besides, it says salt, calcium chloride. I have whole peeled tomatoes from Shaws. Again, when you look at the food product, it says ingredients, salt, calcium chloride. So for all the fear mongering that we get about things, again, it's 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 in the, the FDA has approved this. Now, I don't want to see, you know, lakes get contaminated or damaged or anything like that down the road. But we still have to deal with what's going on today, and this is what started five years ago, why we put it down. Maybe we'll get some better products as the time goes on, but for now, we have to keep it so the lake is not getting all the dust in, and that's it. The calcium chloride is what we do, is solve that problem, and we keep it to the minimum. Because we we don't want the the lakes to get damaged, I don't know anybody who lives on the lake who wants a lake damage, so we're not going reckless about it. So this is what the moisture does, the calcium do, it keeps the road moist and keeps it together if from going the lakes of contamination. That's what we do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think I'd like to, let's see, Mary Stanton, you're next.
Yeah, no, he was, Jeff was asking, what can we do? I used to live on Lower Malsum, I lived on Grady's Lake. And now my daughter lives on Square Pond, and what you do is you join the lake associations, and or you could go to lake association meetings and make sure they're they're monitoring their lakes. Another big thing that we could support as a town is like the, which I know we do, but who knows if we should do more, with the Acton Wakefield Watershed Alliance, or I think that's what they call themselves, but there's also the Malsum one. You know, get more involved with that, if as a person, you could get involved with those organizations and make sure things, it's the biggest thing is runoff. And that's what they try to, you know, take care of, they look at the the worst areas where there's runoff going into lakes, and they try to work on them. Not just the public land, but mostly private homes, where it could be like flying right down off the road from their driveway. So I think those are the, some of the things you can do. So I think those are the, some of the things you can do.
Okay, thank you. Um, just to piggyback on your comment, we also have Article forty-three that we put in place, or the town's what put in place. And that does help with the runoff and with the maintenance of the town roads. Uh, yeah, Mr. Win, you have your hand up again? Uh, unmute? You need.
Actually, Ed, Ed, while, real quick, and while he's doing it, Mr. Donahue has had his hand up prior to this going in.
Yeah.
Are you on now?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. So in terms of what this woman was suggesting right here, we've been working with the York County soils and water with best practices and they've been explaining it to us because we're in the watershed too. So we've been working with them. And they approved, they approved the stuff that we're doing this year for the work and we, and repairs.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Donahue?
A rebuttal to Mr. Win's statement that, uh, you know, this stuff is, is found in, in foods and all that. It tells you right on the bag that you, you can't eat that stuff that he's putting on the ground. It, it might be a something different that they're putting, but, you know, I, I won't even challenge him to take a handful of that and eat it because that'd be ludicrous. It's a poison. And so he can try and sell that this is safe and you eat it every day. It, that's, that calcium is not the same stuff that they're putting on the roads. He's, he's telling a lie.
No, no, let's not go there. Okay, um, I'd like to hear actually from our road commissioners.
We don't have a good idea.
Adam, are you on there? You are on there? Unmute?
I am.
If both Adam and, uh, Will would unmute, um, my question is, can you adequately maintain the roads the way this article is written safely?
I personally don't think so. I, I obviously came from a all state, all salt state. Coming up here was a lot different for me. Um, the roads were a lot tougher to maintain with a sand salt mix that we have that we use now. Um, I also have a computer that only puts out two hundred and forty pounds per lane mile. Um, I use less material, but I, I don't think the roads are gonna be safe. It's gonna be, it's gonna put a lot of liability on Will and I to, and there's gonna be a lot more accidents and we're not gonna be able to do a proper job for these people of our town.
Okay, thank you. Will?
I'm not seeing Will on here.
He, he was.
He was on earlier. That's why I was calling on him.
Yeah, he seems to have fallen off, but we'll see if we can get him back in a minute.
Okay, okay. Who else do we have with hands up?
Assuming, yeah, that's the only hands that we see. I mean, a lot, most people's cameras are turned off, so you need to raise your hand or turn your camera off. It doesn't look like there's any other question.
Yep. And there's the little hand wave feature that should be on your screen as well. From what I understand, I've never used it, but I know it's there. Um,
Oh, it was Mr. Win.
Believe Mr. Win's waving. Go right ahead, unmute.
Uh, in terms of what it's, I just repeated here what's on the can. That may be on some of the bags that say you can't because of the, it would be a total bigger concentration. But in terms of me lying about it, it says right on the can, right on the box. I have it right here. Calcium chloride, it's right there. So I'm not trying to lie to anybody. I'm just repeating to you what is on the can that you buy at the store. That's all.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm sure the, the direction from the, the bag, and I had the same thought, it's the concentration. No, nobody's gonna go take a, a spoonful or a cupful of that and, and, and eat it, so.
I, I got a question.
Yes.
I'd like, I'd like to ask Mr. Donahue how he would, he thinks the town's gonna be able to enforce this ordinance.
And, um, it's my understanding too that this, you know, this also would affect the state, uh, doing one oh nine on the state roads and I don't know whether that's gonna be possible to have them changed. Mr. Donahue, if I could respond?
I would, uh, I would say it's local rule. You know what I'm saying? If, you can tell the state what you want to state. It, it's local rule, local rule rules. And as far as enforcement, is, it's up to the sheriff. That's why we have a, on, on a sheriff here all the time. You know, it, it's just like littering. If it's coming out of the back of a truck, it's, it's a public safety issue and the sheriff would be responsible for enforcing it. If somebody sees it spewing out the back of the truck and it's sheer white and you can see it on the ground and it's salt and they call the police with the, the truck to strip it.
Oh, so what you just, what, what, so what you just said was if it's coming out and it's pure white, we can enforce it. We've got a, we got a twenty percent, not to exceed twenty percent, okay? So my twenty-five years of doing this, if I look in the back of a truck, yeah, I can tell probably it's probably fifty, sixty percent. You know, who's gonna make that call? We're gonna take a sheriff that doesn't do this for a living, have him chase around sand trucks, taking scoops on, doing some sampling. That sounds like it's really gonna work. Like we, our sheriff has got time for that.
Okay, let's see, Will Langley is back on. Thank you, Will. Uh, the question I asked Will is, I asked for our road commissioners, can you adequately maintain safer roads with this article in place? Unmute and answer please.
Uh, do you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I know, I mean, the answer would be, I mean, you could not do, to be effective like they are now, no. Because, you know, we would just be dumping, you know, just like Davis, or be, just constantly dumping sand on our roads and not being able to bear them up. At the end of the day, doing my job, I would not, the road should not be safe and I would feel this road should not be safe with this going, with this going, if this article did go through.
Okay, thank you very much.
And then, and the other thing too is that, you know, I, I understand where Mr. Donahue's coming from. I do, you know, I, I work for people on private roads. I understand what, how it comes. I, I deal with this stuff all the time. And, but you know, at the end of the day, I look at it as a, is a safety thing. I've, me and Adam both took the course last year. Yes, there's things we can do and we can, we can work on that, but I do not think this is the right case. We have other routes we can go, but I don't think this is the right one. I think we're gonna be putting a lot of, a lot of people in danger if we go this way. And, and the other thing too is that, you know, I can just tell you on the road I live on, that there's, there, all the wells are more than three hundred feet, you know, right next to the road. I, I could point out ten of them going down the road and you know, who, who's gonna be responsible for that if they get, if this goes through and people do some homework and, you know, see that you can't be doing this. Now, who, who are we gonna answer to? Now, we need to have an answer for these people if this goes through.
Thank you.
I like, I like to add something. I only know of one contaminated well in the town of Acton. Okay, it's in the parking lot. And the reason why that's contaminated was because it wasn't from straight salt. It was because they were mixing salt and they were putting so much to it, they couldn't keep track of what they were, how much salt they were putting down. That's what happened to the, that contaminated well. And if they were running straight salt, they would have, they would have known how much they were putting down. It would have been easier to keep track of.
Yeah, okay. I, I personally, but no. I've always said you can't have a personal opinion when you're in a public spot like we are. Um, I guess so will be personal, but from the selectman's side, myself, I don't see this as being a safe thing to do as well. I've worked for another town for the last four years, going on in five. Um, neighboring, it's not a neighboring town, it's one south of here. And the town I work for is salt priority. Uh, we have a small amount of sand, just for when it's absolutely necessary. We use, when our trucks go out, they are fully loaded with salt. And once again, they are calibrated and we know how much we're putting out per lane mile. And you put out the bare minimum that you have to put out and it works really well. And we don't have any issues. So I know Acton uses a combination of salt-sand mix. And as we've heard from people here tonight, um, our roads are quite well maintained and safe compared to some of our neighboring towns. So that's my two cents worth on it. Um, do, do we have anybody else that's waving hands and wants to? Anyone else that wants to speak here? Seeing anybody? Mike and Jennifer, do you see anyone?
Nobody on the screen yet, no.
No?
No.
Okay. I'm gonna give Mr. Donahue one more chance to come back on where he is the, uh, person to put the petition back together and speak if he wishes so. If not, we'll, we're gonna move on. Mr. Donahue?
I don't know what to say. I don't know what to say. You know, I just, I saw our problem and, uh, and I, and I brought it forward. I brought it to the people and I, I got all kinds of signatures. I could have got more, but COVID shut me down. And, and I think there's a need for it. You know, people are gonna have to slow down. Put up a sign that says that Acton is a, you think you would be, you would be embracing it and saying, hey, we're gonna be the, the only town in, in Maine that doesn't pour salt on their roads. But instead you wanna go with straight salt, but let's, let's put a, a meter in there and, and do it that way. Or let's put a fifty percent or, or like he says, even, even with meters, you don't know what you're putting down there. It's, it's spewing out the back. I've seen Sanford. I've gone through Sanford and, and the dust storm is, is ridiculous. It, yeah, where is it going? If, you know, in Sanford, they have city water. We don't have to worry about polluting wells except outside of town. It's downtown, we don't have, we don't have municipal water here. This is what we got. This water is our water. So, I mean, everybody's gotta say, so it comes back to you guys. If this thing passes, it's on you. You're gonna have to figure it out. You know, if you want my help, I, I got no problem helping out. I can find alternatives. I found an alternative ice thing. You know, and, and I'm looking into that. It's a, it's still an, under the patent and I'm trying to get permission from the corporate to, to have a plant over here. It's made with the alcohol. It's a extract from the distilleries. There's more distilleries in Maine than anywhere else. If you can use, utilize that product and mix it with the sand salt mix, then you're using even less of the product. So there is alternatives. And as far as Mr. Win and his calcium that you can eat and it's in everybody's diet, there's other alternatives to control the dust. And, and with the calcium, the calcium never goes away. The chlorides never go away. So the dust that happens in January on my road and other, other people I'm sure live on dirt roads, they see that if, if, if there's not a snowpack on the road, the dust, it doesn't matter. Middle of January or December, when there's no snowpack, the dust is twenty feet up in the air again. And now it has chlorides in it. That dust goes and settles on the lake, on the ice. It all melts, it sinks to the bottom and it kills the little things that, that help the lake, that keep the lake fresh. Changes frog sex. I've seen it all. There's, there's tons and tons of information on there. You guys, you just gotta go look, look at it. You know, people gotta slow down. Put signs up that says we're a low salt town. Slow down. It, it's, it's simple. You laugh, Dave.
Oh, I am laughing. Reality comes.
No, 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 stop, stop.
Thank you. So I'm done. I'm gonna go and have my dinner now and, uh, you know, twenty-seventh is coming. You guys gotta write the campaign just like I do. You guys can campaign, stand outside with your signs and do what you gotta do.
Okay, thank you. Um,
Good night.
I think at this point, unless there's someone new that wishes to speak, are we seeing anybody else? No? Okay. I think at this point, we've exhausted this one. And I think we need to move on to the next, next article. You're muted, Jen. You're still muted.
All right, how's that?
That's better.
Doesn't happen very often, I get muted. All right. Article three, shall, shall the town appropriate the sum of five million, five hundred ninety-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and raise the sum of four million, four hundred and six thousand, nine seventy-one for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school budget? The town of Acton's school budget submitted in Article three totals five million, five hundred ninety-three, six sixty-five. It includes locally raised funds in the amount of four million, four hundred and six, nine seventy-one to be assessed to the town taxpayers in accordance with state law. The locally raised amount exceeds the state's essential programs and service funding model by one million, two hundred thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars. This budget includes the cost centers and amounts. Now, I'm not gonna go through them all, but the, you can see the cost centers on the next page. Those are also listed on the ballot and will be in the booth. School committee recommends a yes vote, five to zero. More than finance recommends a yes vote, six to zero.
Okay, thank you. Anyone wish to speak on this article or have questions and concerns? Once again, this is a public hearing only, so we're just discussing the articles and if anyone has any questions.
Mr. Nass's hand is up.
Okay, Mr. Nass, go right ahead.
Good evening, thank you. Uh, so normally we look at a school budget that has the articles delineated as it is in the, in the printed report, but we're only voting on one article today, which is fine, but I, I have some, a few questions. And I'm not sure, Ed, how you wanna do that. Can I just?
Uh, just, yeah, if you got a couple of questions, or ask them and I'm sure someone from the school board of the school can answer your question.
Okay, so can I start with number one?
Go right ahead.
So the, the superintendent's report, uh, talks in one sentence here about federal funds for use to purchase vans to transport small groups and special populations. Could, could he, could Jonathan talk a little bit about what that means? Did we actually buy some vans last year?
Yes, thanks, Richard, for the question. And thank you, everybody, for the opportunity to join you tonight on the school budget. We did. We've had, um, two different installments of federal monies. Uh, we call it COVID relief CRF funds, one and two, and we're looking forward to some more, I believe, in the next sixty days. Those funds needed to be expended by, um, the last day of December, two thousand twenty. Um, we did significant upgrades in the building, but we did purchase three school vans to, um, help service our special education population. And the thinking behind that is our special education transportation contract is up this year. We had a one-year renewal with our current, um, contractor. And it's our hope that with the purchase of the vans, we'll see an overall transportation cost reduction because we'll only be, um, servicing the vans for fuel and, and mileage and things like that. So when we look at our next, uh, continuation of the contract, we're, we're hoping we just have to pay for the drivers and we'll actually own the vans and save some, some money over time. In this budget, we, we felt as though we needed to carry some transportation monies forward because we don't know exactly what the cost savings will be. But the three vans that we bought were a hundred percent federally funded.
So what, what, what kind of vans are they? I guess I was shocked to hear that we actually own some, some vans. What do they look like?
You're muted, Mr. Ross.
Jennifer, I can mute myself. If you can leave my mic open, I'll mute when I'm not talking. I, I think that might help us a little bit. Um, yeah, um, Mr. Nass, what we got were three. Now, Kim, help me. They're Honda Odyssey vans and they're two thousand twenties and we got the warranty package on those. And I know Kim's somewhere in the lineup here with me.
Kim, if you wanna have anything you wanna add to that? Just unmute? Kim, you are unmuted, but we can hear you. Yeah, I can.
Thanks, Mike. I can speak. Kim did the shopping. She was very good at this. Uh, vans were kinda hard to get there for a little while as a lot of school districts were looking at adding their transportation needs with buses and vans. And we went with the vans because, um, our bussing situation seemed to be fine at the time.
Okay, can, can I keep going? Ed, can I keep going?
Yes, another question, go right ahead.
So another, next question, how much COVID money did we get this year and how much are you planning to get next year? That was unclear to me looking at the report.
Right, it wasn't. The actual numbers weren't in there. You'll need to give me a moment and I can look at the monies that we had. But between CRF one and two, and Kim, I'm gonna need you to jump in. I'm gonna say roughly between one and two, probably close to a half million dollars.
Yeah, I was gonna.
Thank you, about a half million, thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna actually pull up the grants, cause we have, in the booklet, there's a summary of the grants and what we received altogether. Uh, like the first one, um, hold on a sec.
And I can speak to the future, Mr. Nass. Um, with the trillion dollar plus, um, Save America Plan that went through, it, it looks as though there's a public document out there that, that lists all schools. The difference is this next round that we should anticipate, hopefully in July, will be about four hundred thousand dollars. That's to be expended over two years. And they've been, um, the federal government has certain stipulations onto how to use that. Whereas the first two grants, there were fewer stipulations and it had to be spent within really three months of the time that we got the grant award. So we have two years, two years for the upcoming, what they're now calling ESER three, funding that we should know about in sixty days.
So I, I pulled, I pulled it up, so the first ESER funds we received, um, it was forty-six thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars. And then we received some, what they called CRF funds. Uh, the first one was a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-seven. And the second one was a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight.
So it's getting around four hundred thousand-ish, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So the money you anticipate getting next year is actually in this budget or not?
The money we anticipate from getting, getting from the federal government is not in this budget, it's a separate, it's separate funding over two years.
Okay.
Do you have another question, Mr. Nass?
I do, one more.
Go right ahead.
So on, I, I'll talk about the high school students and what, in one part here, it says you anticipate eighty-four high school students. How many students do we have now in high school this year?
Seventy-nine.
So we're gonna increase.
Yes.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nass. Anyone else have questions?
Mark, Mark hands up, I'm not sure if he's embarrassed.
Go right ahead, Mark, unmute and go right ahead.
Okay, um, pardon my ignorance, looks like it's a twenty to twenty-two percent increase in the budget year-over-year. Um, can, and I, you know, I didn't see the line items on the other side. I'm curious, what's the overall population increase in students? And where is the bulk of the twenty to twenty-two percent increase? Um, is it, can you just articulate that for me, please?
I'm not sure where you're seeing a twenty-two percent increase because our total, okay, so our total anticipated expenditures from last year to this year is actually a thirty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollar decrease or a point six-one percent decrease. Um, the tax, um, the amount of tax, anticipated revenues from taxes is also going down um, by about, uh, less revenues of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Hey, does that answer your question?
Unmute, Mark.
Yep.
I was trying to do that, sorry. Um, I, I just kinda read it as four point four to five point five. And the allocation is out of the, of the essential programs funding guidelines, which I can understand. So I didn't, not seeing year-over-year and how the funding's broken down, I, that's how I read that. And when you said this tax, when you said tax revenue, is it that the demand on the tax revenue is going down this year? Or there's less tax generation this year?
Okay, yes, so, so basically, um, we, when it comes to the revenues, next year, we will have a decrease from the state by about sixty-five thousand. However, um, our, the school's unassigned fund balance has increased and from that, we are gonna take seven hundred and fifty thousand from our unassigned fund balance to offset the budget. And to do that, that would be, um, less revenues from the town. You know, so the allocated local and additional local is going to be almost four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars less than what it was this year.
So going forward, and this will be my last question, um, anytime I hear of fund balances, uh, by the way, I, I was on the school board in Sanford for a couple of years so, back when they implemented the, uh, essential programs. So I am a little familiar with that, but when you talk about fund balances, like the savings account, right? So if you're running a deficit of seven fifty to pull out a fund balance, at what point is there, if this is an ongoing stable budget or slightly increasing with, you know, nuanced changes, population, et cetera? At what point do you, you need more taxes to offset that?
Okay, so consistently from, for about the last eight years, everything's been pretty consistent with the school. The reason why the unassigned fund balance was so high to be able to be used this year is because of what we, what, what the whole town, what the world's gone through, um, be, between the COVID and the amount of grant money that we've received in. So when we went fully remote last April or March, actually, there were a lot of, um, regular budgeted expenditures that, that the school usually would pay for. But that didn't happen because everybody was home and it was fully remote, so there was quite a bit of, of, you know, expected budgeted items to go through that did not happen, you know, uh, field trips, all kinds of stuff. Um, and at the same time, a lot of, a lot of the, uh, CRF money and ERSF money was used to also pay for a lot of supplies that we were using, so a lot of the cleaning supplies, a lot of, uh, ev- everything we had for the COVID supplies, but at the same time, we weren't buying stuff as well. So that also helped offset our budget, so we ended up, the growth in our, um, un, unassigned fund balance grew dramatically, so we needed to offset the taxes because it, it's, it's just, it, this is not a normal thing that happens, it's not something that would happen all the time. Um, usually you just use unassigned fund balance at a, you know, about two hundred thousand, something in that range. You, you know, what you might not have spent from the year before, but like I said, this year was an odd year. This is not like standard operating procedures, just that with everything that happened in the last year and a half. Um, and, you know, the other thing too is I expected to use about two hundred thousand from unassigned fund balance for this year, which also we did, we won't get to, so again, this is how it'll keep growing, so we just needed to, to turn it back.
Basically, we, we kinda came to a standstill for about three months, then we didn't anticipate the federal funding, which helped us with supplies and we're building this year's budget based on if we need to run schools as if we're not going to shut down for three months again, that's why you're looking at pretty much a flat budget.
Okay, thank you, appreciate the clarifications.
Hey, Kim, anyone else have questions on this? I'm not seeing anyone. Okay. Jennifer, you're not seeing anyone? Nope, okay, let's move on to the next article.
Article four, shall the school committee be authorized to expend such other sums as may be received from federal or state grants or programs or other sources during the fiscal year for school purposes provided that such grants, programs or other sources do not require the expenditure of other funds not previously appropriated? School committee recommends a yes vote five to zero, Warren Finance recommends a yes vote six to zero.
Okay, is there anyone that would like to, have any comments on this article? This one, I think, if I'm remembering correctly, is, I hate to use the word boilerplate, but it's a very similar article that we have every year.
It is the same article.
Yep, it just gives them the authorization to, uh, to use that money, accept it. So we have a very similar one on the town side. So, anyone else, anyone wish to speak on this that has questions or comments? Not seeing any? Okay, let's move on to the next article.
Article five, to see if the town of Acton will appropriate the receipt of certain federal and state grants and carry any previously balances for all grant revenue accounts. School committee recommends a yes vote five to zero, Warren Finance recommends a yes vote six to zero.
Thank you very much, I think we've seen, the school has basically, uh, explained how they've received grant money and COVID money, which is very similar to all of that, and that is exactly where it's worked, so anyone have any questions on that? Nope, not seeing any, then we'll move on to Article Six.
Article Six, to see if the town of Acton will vote to raise and appropriate the following revenues, balances carried in fund transfers to fund the food service budget in addition to amounts raised by taxation for food services in the school operating budget. School nutrition revenues, eighty thousand dollars, school committee recommends a yes vote five to zero, Warren Finance recommends a yes vote six to zero.
Okay, thank you, any questions on this article from anyone? Going once, going twice. Okay, we've now come to the conclusion of all the articles. Personally, and from, as a selectman, I'd like to thank the school for everything they do throughout the year and for either going after or receiving that money, however they got it. Uh, that's a tremendous thing to be able to, to do for our little town. Um, that was what, close to half a million dollars in funding?
Yeah.
Yes, so, uh, I either wasn't paying attention throughout the, the last year and whatnot and didn't realize this, you know, you'd, you'd gotten all that. So that was, that was absolutely wonderful, I wish we could do that on the town side, but it doesn't seem to be as much available there.
Ed, if it's, if it's okay, Ed, I'd just like to thank the selectmen, the school committee and the people at this meeting on behalf of the kids and the staff of Acton Elementary, we really do appreciate your support and it's been a very transparent and a very good budget process for us this year.
Thank you, it certainly has, I'm, I'm, it's been one of the easier years, I think, that we've, we've gone through. The, uh, Warren Finance Committee, I think it's worked close with you and done well there.
They did an excellent job.
It's been a good year, yes, it really has, so, okay, any, uh, any other business? Once again, this is a public hearing.
I just want to thank the school board and the school also, I know the last year has been, uh, extremely trying and, um, you know, you guys do a great job every year and, and, you know, we're glad we have all of you, thank you so much.
Uh, I'd like to say something there, um, just so that everybody knows that the school, by giving back their, you know, that four, four hundred some thousand dollars that they gave back to the town there to help offset taxes, that was a, that was a real big deal, cause, you know, in, in the long haul, the stuff that we're hoping to pay off because of that money is really gonna help us down the road, so I appreciate it much.
Exactly, thank you. Okay, I guess at this point, we've exhausted the articles, we've had some great discussions on all. And I guess at this point, I'm going to, uh, say we're all set with the public hearing tonight, so thank you, everyone that.
I'm not sure if she had anything to add, Judy?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to, can you hear me okay?
Yes, go right ahead.
Um, I just wanted to remind people that we have some great budget booklets that are, um, at the post office, at the town hall, at the school, at the, uh, Acton Trading Post and it's also online and if you have, if you're wondering anything at all about the budget, it's spelled out very, very clearly in there and also letters from the school committee and letters from the superintendent, uh, explaining, uh, how we managed this year of COVID and how we're planning to manage next year of COVID, so. And on behalf of the school committee, I also would like to thank everyone for their constant support, um, to the, to the school and the children of Acton.
Great, thank you, Judy. Okay, so at this point, I'm gonna conclude the public hearing, thank you all for coming and get out to vote.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night.
Good night.